Okay, perfect. They can just, yeah. Guys, we're gonna get started. All right, it's six o'clock. We're gonna get started. Councilmember Reedy is running just a little bit late for traffic, but he can join us when he gets here, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City of Lincoln's Regular Meeting of the City Council. This meeting will be televised and available on cable channel eighteen as well as available via Zoom. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Bill Raith from Lincoln Christian Life Church. Once the invocation has concluded, Mayor Andriata will call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Pastor Raff. Appreciate you being here last minute.
It's my pleasure. Had to leave my kids at back-to-school night, but they're okay. Someone will take them home. It's totally fine. So if you'd bow your heads and close your eyes with me, we'll go ahead and pray. Lord God, I want to thank you so much for these public servants, the council members, the mayor, the city employees, city manager, Lord God, all the first responders that are here in Lincoln and those that are here in the room. Lord, I just thank you for them. I thank you that you have given them a heart to serve. And I pray in that heart to serve, Lord God, you give them protection and guidance and wisdom as they do their best to serve the people of Lincoln. And I just pray, Lord God, that you would just be with them as they make decisions to help us be the best city we can. Bless them in every aspect of their life and everything they set their hands to. And I'm so grateful that I live in a city with these wonderful public servants. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. All right, Rice, back to back-to-school night. Appreciate you. All right, wow, call the meeting to order. Thank you for being here. City of Lincoln, twenty twenty-five Regular Meeting, City Council, Lincoln Redevelopment Successor Agency, Lincoln Public Financing Authority. Today is August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Hope, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Reedy, running late. Councilmember Pearl.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Eklund.
Here.
Mayor Andriata.
Here. Thank you. All right. Is it still Captain or have you been promoted again, Evan? Are you still Ca- did you get promoted? Okay, Captain Fattis, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Yes.
I didn't want to say the wrong phrase.
Flag to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Otherwise, it'd be here.
Yep, we can do that. Yep. All right, so thank you for that, Mr. Scully. We're on item four, Agenda Modifications. We, since Councilmember Reedy is running late, we don't want him to miss Chief Mihia swearing in, so we're gonna switch five A and five B, and so we're gonna have a presentation from an organization called Freedom Through Education Presentation, and I'll let them introduce themselves, but let me just set the stage for this, if I may. I met Johnny a couple months ago, actually it's been a few months, at a chamber event for Roseville. And I had just met with a group of residents from Sun City, and one of the issues that they were having is some of the the older residents are having a hard time bringing their garbage cans out from behind their gates down to the street for pickup and to put it back. Other neighbors were trying to help, but as this one gentleman said, he goes, "We're all getting older. It's a little bit harder." You know, and the city can't do all of it. And so we've modified our policy a little bit in the last couple of years. And so how can you help us with this? Well, I I heard Johnny's presentation at this chamber event, and I just thought, oh, my gosh, this might be a solution. And so he and his wife are going to come present what they do. And I think, and I've invited some of the HOA Board to be here and their Neighborhood Watch Director to listen to this, because I, it's a little bit of out-of-the-box solution, but I think that it could be a real benefit for both. So please welcome, come to the to the mic, and I think you guys also have a video when you're ready.
Welcome. Thank you for having us. It's a privilege to always share what we do. As Holly said, it's a little out-of-the-box thinking, but we're very good at what we do. This is our ten-year anniversary. So I think I'm gonna show the video first to break the ice, and then we'll, I'll do a little other presentation, and then some of the solutions that we think that we can do, and some of the solutions we're doing currently in where we're at. So let's show the video.
Freedom through Education originated in San Quentin Prison. Many of the individuals that were leaving San Quentin Prison, there was no solution for them on the outside. So they reverted back to criminal behavior, criminal thinking, which led them to crime, which led them back into San Quentin Prison. They would do small groups inside San Quentin Prison, and they said, "What we need is life-skill education on the outside. We need a place that we can learn how to live again."
My name is Efro Morales, and I completed the Freedom Through Education Transitional Housing Program as a successful graduate back in twenty twenty. You know, having a roof over my head, having my basic life necessities, food, water, shelter, it provided stability in my life, a sense of community, a sense of security and sustainability for me to be able to reach some of my goals that I had set out for myself.
The mission of Freedom Through Education is helping disadvantaged communities with second chances. We understand that housing without programming doesn't work. We can fill the houses with formerly incarcerated, but without coaching, grouping, mentorship, things fall apart in that house. We also have done the research on trying to give programming to individuals without housing, and you could reach them for a little while, but eventually old behaviors stick. If you don't have a place to live, if you don't have a warm shower, it's really hard to advance your life living on the street or living in a car, where a lot of individuals coming out of prison end up. So Freedom Through Education was built on the philosophy that we need to provide housing and programming to help individuals become productive, active citizens again.
I mean, from a background of me personally being incarcerated for thirteen years, I had a life sentence, and it was overturned. And so I came home to my family, and it was a struggle. Most guys, there wasn't even cell phones when they got arrested. So we're helping them basically learn the world. It's like a new culture to them. We give them that support. We give them that guidance. We give them everything basically that somebody wants when they first come home.
When I first came in, I came in with the idea, I was kind of like anxious and like nervous about, you know, what life will be like, right? And it made me more optimistic, because I've seen people leave the program and be successful. I've seen case managers that went through what I went through. They're here as guides and, you know, motivation for me to follow.
A lot of the challenges are mental for them, because they're coming into a whole new world. They don't know. It's the unknown.
It's all about changing your thinking pattern. That's what it really is. If you have done all that in there, and you're getting ready to get out, and maybe they grant you the parole, and then you're, you can do this program.
Currently, we are in Sacramento County, serving the greater Sacramento area. Our vision for the next five to ten years is to get support, county, city, state, individuals, to help us take that Freedom Through Education model into multiple counties throughout the state of California.
If not for this program, though, I tell you, I'd probably mess it up, you know? And that's the last thing in the world I ever wanted to do, was to disappoint all the people that were going, "Man, you're doing great." I didn't want to do that. I didn't want to do it to myself. These people right here are just, for me, they're my family.
I see a man come out of prison after forty years of incarceration and totally change the character of who he used to be. The work that we do at Freedom Through Education gives that man a second chance, a real second chance at freedom. I come to work every day excited, enthusiastic, trying to meet another man to change their life.
That's a little bit about Freedom Through Education, and it's a little out-of-the-box thinking. We don't save puppies. And if I was up here telling people we save puppies, I'd probably get a lot more support. But what we do is give second chances. We are very good at what we do. We have over a ninety-five percent success rate for individuals doing long-term offenses in prison, coming out, coming home, rehabilitating their lives, active citizens with credit and apartments and working and driving and reunited with families. Most of our individuals are long-term offenders. So these individuals have been away for quite some time, fifteen to fifty-five years straight, which if you talk to individuals that do that kind of time, it's a changed experience, not like individuals that go in for two months and come out and go in for a year and come out, which cities and communities suffer a lot when that happens. When an individual goes away for ten years, fifteen years, thirty, forty years, they come out at forty-five, fifty, sixty years old, ready to make a difference. So I love what I do. I think many of us in this room know somebody or a family member or somebody that's needed a second chance. And so that's what I believe in. I had a second chance many, many years ago and changed my life, and I know that with a little help, a little encouragement, a little support, anybody has the opportunity to change their life. So when I gave the presentation, I met with Holly, and we were discussing about some of the things we do now down in Sacramento, around the Orangevale area. We actually give services, lawn care services for seniors, disadvantaged communities. We go in there for a very minimal cost. For us, it's on-the-job training, job experience, as well as helping the community. So we do lawn care for needy people, our seniors out there. They make a donation to our organization, and we go there every week and mow their lawn and do everything they need that maybe their spouse used to do, and now their spouse is not there. So when I talk to Holly about our seniors, I'll raise my hand. I'm a senior now, which is great. It's a dangerous thing. My dad's eighty-nine years old, and walking on a wet driveway is dangerous. Walking across a wet lawn is dangerous. Walking on a small slope is dangerous. Somebody that can't take out their garbage, it's demoralizing when you get to that point of your life and know that it's an easy task that you can't do anymore. Our individuals go through rigorous character development. That's why we're so successful. They love serving. They love giving back. And so we thought, like, man, this could be a really neat thing that we could provide. We could provide an easy route service, where we could go and bring the can from the house to the street, and then the next day we take the can back and do the, you know, whoever, on Tuesday, would do that, the next series. Obviously, we have a very distinguished vetting process with our guys. Not every individual would qualify. We're very strict on that. But we have guys working at Siemens. We have guys working at Sacramento County. We have individuals working at UC Davis. So we're very good at what we do. The one clip in there that you noticed when I said housing without programming, and we've all, I think, have witnessed that in the news and other locations, bringing in housing without programming, and we release individuals or other types of individuals without any programming, havoc breaks out, and communities are unsafe again, and people are homeless again, and there's really no solution, and vice versa, right? Trying to go to the street or the river, or we all want to help, right? We all have philanthropic hearts. We want to help. But trying to program individuals without support doesn't work either, right? They get a little Band-Aid, and then tomorrow they're doing the same thing. Our local law enforcement encounters that probably daily. So we have a different solution. We house them and program them. Two groups a week, one-on-one case management every week. We have second-chance employers, and at the end of the day, they have credit, bank accounts, housing, and they're well-paid citizens again. So we're thinking, you know, that could be a great solution to help our seniors at the same time, rehabilitation at the same time, on-the-job training at the same time, and we want to have a chance to maybe propose that and write something up, or maybe that could be something for the future of Lincoln. I'm Placer County resident. We are Placer County residents. We lived in Lincoln for six years, pre-Sun City, and then we moved to Roseville and now Granite Bay.
So before I turn it over for questions and comments, and we'll let the public ask questions too, I just want to say that I've met with with him a couple times and had in-depth conversations, and there's a couple of things that stood out to me where I thought that this could be a viable situation or a solution. One is that Freedom Through Education is the model for California. When other nonprofits come and they say, "We want to do what you do," the state says, "You need to look what they do." Because, and we we know this in the council, when we deal with the homeless issue or other issues, the housing-first grant funding, all that, it's, and it's a disaster. And he had an opportunity to take that money. He didn't, because what he says is true. You you can, you have to have rules, regulations, and structures. You can't just say, "Well, we'll give you housing, but let you do whatever you're gonna do anyway." That doesn't work, and so they don't do that. And the other thing, and he mentioned it, is that the ones that would be vetted for this program or this solution are the ones who were incarcerated for many years, and they have no desire to go back, and they want to give back to the community. And partnering with our older citizens in Sun City would be something that would bring value to their life, but also help our residents feel like someone's looking out for them. And they're paying the city a nominal fee to bring the cart to the to the sidewalk anyway, but the city can't go behind the gate. So these guys, and Johnny said, they'll bring their golf cart, and they'll do a nice little round. And so there's a few things that really stood out to me where I felt that this might be something that really could could work. So I just wanted to share those things, and so open it up to council first, and then we'll see if any of the community has questions.
I'll take a, take an opening statement. I like, I like the concept. I come from a law enforcement family. My father carried in New York State. My daughter was on the job in Sacramento. My son-in-law just retired from Roseville PD. So I understand that side of it. I like the the whole concept. It sounds like you, the wraparound services are really critical, and it's Holly, as you pointed out, that's a difference with what we are doing, with what's so, different from what so many other people are doing. And it takes that, it takes the commitment and the desire to do it. I'd love to see this. Most, most of my community, my district, is up in Sun City. And so I'd be very supportive of this, like to find out more information about it, but everything that I'm hearing right now, I really, really like.
And of course, anybody that didn't want to participate, you know, it's completely voluntary. But I would like to give them an opportunity to at least hear it. That's why I invited the board members to come, so. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I I feel the same way. I feel the same way that my fellow councilmember Pearl and our our mayor feels that I think this is a really great opportunity for us to not only help our residents, but give back, and what you said resonated with me, that everybody does deserve a second chance, and I mean, I think that we feel that way. And I as well come from law enforcement. Both my parents were correctional officers and RN, and they, throughout the years, have had a lot of stories of empathy and wanting to give these people you know, a future, and it's a really steep cliff after you're released to find a way back into our society, and I understand what that looks like and how challenging that is. So I I'm definitely supportive of the idea, and some of my district is also in Sun City. I definitely want to hear from our chief, what their perspective is, and and their feedback, as well as the residents.
I love that you're doing this. For a couple of reasons, the, one big one that stands out to me is that as people change over time, what's the best way to to put it? They still, by human nature, we still, we want to be a part of something or have, be accepted, right? And if you take and hold a grudge against somebody for something that they did forever and ever and ever, then you're doing, you're hurting them and you're hurting yourself. With this program, you give them an opportunity to serve. Anytime you serve other people, you tend to have feelings of care for that person, because you're doing something that they can't do for themselves, kind of a thing. So by engaging in service, and then a community that accepts the person as a person, you don't have to, you know, whether you agree with what they did or didn't do or whatnot, when you set that aside and say, "Yeah, you're you're still a person," and, you know, people not only make bad choices, but things happen. And so when you do that, a community can grow together when you set those kinds of things aside, kind of. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for the data that you've provided. Yeah, so you all have a.
Well, let me, let me tell you one thing that we, a little bit that makes us different. We always make it very clear that we never condone the crime, right? Well, we do condone the man. We do condone the change, right? So we don't glorify what they did. We don't do any of that kind of stuff, right? That is, then they did their sentence, and now what's, what's new is a new creation, as the Good Book says. And so we're gonna, we're gonna buy into that. And so I guess that's why we're successful, I guess, yeah.
Okay, so I would like to give anybody an opportunity from the public to ask a question or let us know how you feel about this. Chief, are you familiar with this organization?
I'm not specifically, no.
Okay. Anybody like to ask a question?
I have one follow-up question.
Sure, okay. Go ahead, and then we'll go.
Are the participants, are they on parole? Have they, have they finished their their sentence, and now they're in that hat, that positioning point that they are looking for the next, the next chapter?
Yes, sir. So every man that comes, comes from the gate to our program. Ninety-nine percent of them are on parole, and they'll be on parole for quite some time. So that also helps us with a little bit extra accountability and a little bit more accountability for themselves, because they know they have some other restrictions and some other duties that they have to abide by. But it's a, it's a good thing.
I also have a follow-up question. How do you determine graduation? Like, is there, as part of the program, how do you know that they've completed whatever, I mean, is there steps as part of the program, and?
Yeah, so majority of the individuals are with us six months to a year. Living, we provide everything for them. And then there's some coaching, counseling, one-on-one group sessions. Some individuals are mandated by the parole to do some extra things that they have to do. But we have some little steps. We kind of have a list of all the different things, criminal behavior, family reunification, anger management, all those kinds of things that they graduate from, get certificates from. And then if they want to do extra, we'll do character development. When we send them out to the, like, we're gonna send a guy to UC Davis, we will make sure that that individual goes through a specific character development, on-the-job training development, so they aren't only getting employed, but they're becoming very good employees. Yeah.
Come on up to the microphone and. Yeah, right here. Yeah.
I'm Linda Miner, and I'm the head of Neighborhood Watch in Sun City. And I spend a lot of time, effort, me and my five hundred volunteers, taking care of these people, because as they slow down physically, they also lose some mental acuity. The biggest things that they are prone to is scams. Door-to-door salesmen, these people, I protect them. I think the chief, the chief's heard me a few times, as as those of you who live there do, that that my concern would be, you said you kind of, well, there are people who were in prison longer, which probably means they did something more serious. So so I've got my little protectives up. I want anybody to have a second chance. But but these are, these people, some of them are challenged mentally. Some of them are not very social anymore. So they are susceptible. When we talk to adult protective services, a lot of what happens is family, but it could be a cleaning person. It could be a landscaper that builds up their trust and takes advantage. So I'm not saying no, but I'm saying I would like to a little know more about the background of them, understanding who we're introducing them to.
Absolutely.
Because that's my job. That's what I do.
Absolutely, and that's a very fair question, and that's exactly why I invited you here. And if if there's interest moving forward, then we will set up a time to come to Sun City to do a broader presentation, so everybody can hear it, and and those who are interested could possibly participate. And I'll let Johnny respond to that, but I'll just say that the the idea that I have in my head is that they, they might meet them, you know, initially, so they know who they are and have a short conversation under supervision. And really, they're not spending a lot of time there. They're coming in, getting the cart, the can, and bringing it out, and then returning it. There's, there won't, unless there's some kind of issue with the garbage can, there won't be a need for them to like knock on the door and say, "Hey," you know, there won't be any of that. And and as Johnny said, they're very vetted, but I'll let him respond to that, because he's the expert here. But your your questions are completely fair, and we want to make sure that everybody feels safe and confident if we move forward with this. Yeah. Do you want to respond to that?
Sure, sure. My father's eighty-nine years old, and I trust these individuals to go to my dad's house, build fences, repair toilets. My dad falls in love with these guys. Obviously, they're, they're, he had all boys, and so he's kind of, to these men. But, you know, again, the vetting process is very important, uniformed. Everything we do will be above board. And again, I would invite anybody to come see our program, and it would probably change your mind, me, me and a few of our guys.
Yeah, and I, I would just reiterate again that the ones who would be participating, they're not like younger ones who are in and out and still kind of dabbling in criminal world. These are older guys who have been in for a long time and really are are getting educated. They're working. They want to give back to the community. And so I would not have brought this forward if I didn't feel like it could be a good solution. So are there any other questions? Anybody have any concerns? Curiosity? Anybody online? Okay. Anybody else?
I was just gonna say, one final thing. I was very glad to hear that that the folks are on parole, because that's a huge hammer. You know, they do not want to go back.
They don't want to go back.
And so, and having that layer of direct supervision, being on parole, is different than if they were out, and then you're just in a program, coming and going. Huge difference.
Big difference, yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Is there, sorry if I missed, you stating this earlier, but is there another community similar to Sun City that you're already working with or have been working with in the older?
Not necessarily a senior community, but I would say a a big percentage of Orangevale is big, and so through our church, we have got recommendations through the elderly community of our church, which is very elderly, in their seventies and eighties. And so we go there and do their lawns, and I just got a call to move a hospital bed out of a of a room, and I'll send two guys over there with a truck, and they'll move the hospital bed for the lady and free of charge, and we'll take it to the church and drop it off for the next individual. So we have a lot of, and again, a lot of our individuals are getting close to seniors themselves, and their whole thought process is making up time. So they want to work. They want to give. They want to serve. And because they've done such a long time, their crimes were heinous, some of them, and they are very remorseful, or they wouldn't be in my program.
Yes, ma'am. Come to the mic.
So my name is Linda Franklin. Actually, I live in Sun City now, so so fortunately, I don't need that kind of help yet, because I have a husband doing it, but that can change. So I I love this concept. I love the idea that we could be helping people who need some who need some chance to serve and redeem themselves and also helping people who need it. But I'm just curious about the logistics. Like, how would people be, where would people be paying for it? How would they be, how would the whole arrangements be made? Maybe we could hear a little if that's determined on the logistics.
Right, so if we, if we choose to move forward and do a presentation in Sun City and people want to sign up for it, then we would work out the, so instead of, I don't know how it works on their, their garbage bill or whatever, where they pay the city to bring it out to the street from, from their, you know, front. They would just pay a nominal fee to Freedom for Education, and they would sign up through them. And we would, we would probably have that list too, just so we know what's going on. But then, then they would just work with Johnny and his organization, and then they would just do their route. Scott, is Sun City all on the same day for garbage? Or are they, they two different days? Okay. So that's something we would have to talk about, right? So depending on what the schedule is and depending on who wants to sign up, they would just, instead of having the city do it, they would have these guys do it. And, and so we're still working through those. We don't have all that nailed down yet. This is just the preliminary step. But yeah, we would work all that out. Yep.
Great. Sounds great.
Thank you.
Do you have any idea how many residents are asking and needing this service?
How many sign up for what we have now?
It was last, in the, before, before the, is this working? No. Before the most recent rate analysis, I think we had about 50 residents that were on it. And when we decided that it was difficult for us to provide that service, the reasoning was that, you got to imagine, for our guys, we have a very limited hauling crew. And 50 times, call it five or six minutes, maybe four minutes of time, really multiplies out to a lot, and it kind of affects the routes. So post rates, that amount of people that were getting that service went down to far less. But we hear a lot from people that don't necessarily have medical issues yet or something provable, but maybe it's just difficult for them to do it, that would love to have that service back.
Either, were you going to say something or was, okay. Okay. Well, so I guess the next step would be if, if Sun City is amenable, we could set up a, a time to present to the new executive director and any residents who are interested. But I think, is the council okay with, with going to that next step?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you guys okay with that? Okay. All right, well, thank you so much for taking time to be here, both of you. Is there anything else that you wanted to share or?
No, this is beautiful. Thank you very much for your hearts and allowing us.
Really excited about this possibility, so.
Then it's just logistics after that, right? It's just like, if you get the okay, then it's just like,
Right.
And then you got to say, oh, shoot, now we're going to do logistics.
Right.
But, you know, we'll figure that out.
That'll be your problem, sir. But no, I'm just kidding. So, so why don't we then, we'll, we'll just talk later and we'll set up a time and we'll continue and we'll present to Sun City.
Okay.
Great, okay. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, he's here, yeah. I was going to say Councilman Reed is here, and he was just waiting for that to be done. And so we are going to go back to 5A. We have a very exciting event happening. We're going to do a badge pinning and oath of office for our newly appointed fire chief, Anthony Mejia. And Chief Alves is going to start us off.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I am Matt Alves, your Public Safety Chief, for about the next five minutes. So when I took this position as Public Safety Chief in 2021, I was clear to the city manager and council at that time that I'd happily take on the role of Public Safety Chief. But to truly grow the Lincoln Fire Department, we needed a full-time fire chief. As I spent time with the fire department, it became evident to me that time was not on our side and we needed to make some changes soon. We had staff primed to advance and eager for our department to progress. So their motivation, combined with the city's ongoing expansion, staff was in need of a leader who has spent a career in the fire service and could help them achieve their potential. Additionally, we had battalion chiefs performing tasks above what was expected of them and with the schedules that they work. And there was no leader present on a consistent basis during regular business hours. So to put things simply, things were getting difficult. I often make the comment, probably too liberally for my own good, that I can run a government agency and keep it afloat, but I can't grow our fire department like it needs and deserves. I needed someone who knew the business, could speak the language of our firefighters, and would be in the office when the rest of city executives were working. Sean and I had some lengthy discussions, and ultimately, we agreed that a deputy fire chief was needed. And we began our search. And on February 26th of '24, Chief Anthony Mejia began his career with the City of Lincoln as deputy fire chief. For the remainder of 2024, Chief Mejia and I worked closely together. We identified a long list of items to address, and we prioritized them. Each day that passed, his leash grew longer and longer. He demonstrated to me and those around him, he was a man of integrity, was a professional in the fire service, and clearly knew what he was talking about. Around January 2025, I was driving home from work just reflecting on Chief Mejia's performance and how we'd structured our workflow. And there felt like there was an inefficiency in the system that wasn't allowing us to put our best product forward. And in that drive, it dawned on me, the inefficiency was me. We had reached a point where the Public Safety Chief model was no longer a benefit. High-level decisions were slowed down because of the approval process that they required. So for example, Chief Mejia would come up with a solution to a problem, but he wouldn't be able to make a move until we discussed it together. And bureaucracy was in the way. And for those of you who know me, I don't like bureaucracy. The Chief Mejia had proven himself to me and to those around him. He gained the respect of the fire department and our regional cooperators. He was ready to add his fifth bugle to his collar and lead our fire department on his own. So I met with Sean and discussed this with him. And in the years that I've worked with Sean, I've never seen him shocked. Not me. But I saw it that day. And his response to me was, you sure you want to give that up? And I explained to him, this isn't about giving something up. It's about the City of Lincoln providing the best service possible to our citizens. For a fire department to deliver that, I needed to get out of the way, and Chief Mejia needs to take over. So for the next eight months, we worked on this plan, and we are finally here. A huge thank you goes out to Sean, Veronica, and her staff and the city council for seeing this through. And this is a smart business decision that you will immediately see a return on investment with. So before I bring up Chief Mejia, I wanted to take a brief moment to recognize our Lincoln Fire Department staff. This is an incredible group of individuals caring for our citizens. I saw this in, when Chief Mejia was developing a comprehensive wildland fire training program this year, and our staff was soaking it up like a sponge. I'm confident without Chief Mejia's leadership and their willingness to learn, the outcomes of the three major fires we've had this season would have been nowhere near as successful as they were. The performance of our firefighters this season is a testament to their commitment and abilities. And I'm excited to watch as they continue to grow and be better every day. So it's been an honor leading our fire department. I'm not one who puts much thought into legacies, but my hope is simple. I hope I left the department better than I found it. Now, as I hand off the reins of the fire department and change my title to chief of police, Chief Mejia, would you join me? Anthony Mejia is the deputy fire chief for the City of Lincoln and has more than 24 years of fire service experience. He began his career as a firefighter and advanced through the ranks of engineer, captain, battalion chief, and deputy chief. His previous service includes the San Bernardino County Fire Department, Orange County Fire Authority, Apple Valley Fire Protection District, and FEMA Urban Search and Rescue Task Force, where he served as a rescue specialist. Over the course of his career, he has held specialized roles on a USNR team with the Swiftwater Rescue Team as a training officer and as a helicopter rescuer, and has been deployed in many of California's largest wildfires. He holds a master's degree in emergency services management and has earned the chief fire officer and chief training officer designations from the Center of Public Safety Excellence, along with chief officer certification from the California State Fire Marshal's Office. In 2023, he relocated to Lincoln from Southern California. And he's been married to Lacy, his wife, for 21 years and is the father of six children. In the past year and a half, Chief Mejia has advanced our fire department dramatically. I have full faith he'll continue to do so while remaining humble, being a servant leader, and making the right decision no matter how hard it may be. He and I will continue to work together, will support each other, and provide the best public safety possible for the City of Lincoln. And with that, I would like to invite his wife, Stacy Lacy, up, who will be pinning his badge. Lacy?
Let's answer that.
And now Mayor Andriata will administer the oath of office.
Do this. Let me just say this is a real honor to be able to swear you in. And I just want to thank you for your leadership and what you brought to the City of Lincoln. And I want to tell your guys, thank you for all the work that you've done over the years and that you have embraced Chief Mejia, you've embraced your new training, and this city is eternally grateful. All right, sir. All right, raise your right hand, sir. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I want to thank many people who've helped me get here, several of whom are watching tonight. First, I want to thank the mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and the city manager. Thank you for your trust that you place the responsibility of leading the Lincoln Fire Department in my hands. And I will work every day to ensure our firefighters are well-prepped, well-equipped, and ready to serve this community with pride. Next, I want to thank Police Chief Alves. First of all, thank you for hiring me. That was good. For, for supporting me and for giving me the opportunity to serve in this role. Your mentorship and your example as a man of integrity have helped me understand not only the city, but also what it's going to mean to lead with principle. So thank you for that. To our executive team and city staff and Lincoln PD, I want to thank you all for the warm welcome, the consistent support that I've continued to receive, and I look forward to continue serving alongside each and every one of you. To the Western Plaster County Fire Chiefs, I want to thank you for your support and for helping me understand the operations and dynamics of our region. And your guidance has been invaluable. To the Lincoln firefighters, as a chief, I always look for two qualities in a firefighter. The first thing I will ask is, do they love the job? The second thing I'll ask is, do they care about the community they serve? And the Lincoln firefighters, they live out both of these qualities every single day. I thank you for the trust and support you have all shown me. They're an amazing group of firefighters, and I'm honored to serve as your fire chief. To my many mentors and friends in the fire service, I want to say thank you. I would not be here without the time and effort that they've invested in me. I want to specifically recognize retired fire captain Steve Schaumber. He's been my greatest mentor. His belief in me has changed the direction of my career. He's loved me like a son, and I loved him like a father. Thank you for everything you've done for me. To my family and so-called that's watching tonight, your love and encouragement and belief in me over the years has meant more than I can express. They're such an amazing group of people, and I'm truly blessed to have such a wonderful and supportive family. I love you guys very much. And finally, I've saved the best for last. To my wife and children, to my six kids, Maddie, who's not here. She's in Idaho, but she's watching, hopefully. Wyatt, Hunter, Sawyer, Connor, and Ryder. You are all so amazing and have brought me so much joy in my life. You all understand what it means for your dad to be a firefighter. I've missed birthdays, holidays, sporting events, and moments you might have needed me. You've spent holidays at the fire station, heard all my fire stories, and still ask me if I got a fire when I come home from work. You've been so proud of what your dad does for a living, and your support has meant everything. You are the reason I work so hard. Thank you for being so understanding and the love you show me. To my wife, Lacy, you, you are my rock, my best friend and my partner through it all. And you've been with me since the very beginning, timing me on ropes and knots in the academy, even telling me when I got them wrong, listening to size-ups as I prepared for company officer, enduring endless firehouse stories and drama. You've lived through the forced hires, the ruined vacations, the long fire deployments. You've helped me recover from on-the-job injuries, sleepless nights, difficult calls, and so much more. You know the toll this job has taken on me, our kids, and you. Yet you've shown nothing but grace, support, and understanding and love. You've been my place to reset and stay grounded. You believe in me even more than when I believed in myself. And our shared faith in God is what has called us up here, and yet there's a reason we're here today. There's no one I'd rather walk this journey with than you. Love you, thank you, and this would not be possible without you. Above all, I want to thank God for his calling and sovereignty over my life. Without him, I can do nothing. And I'm committed to leading my family, this department, and this community in a way that honors him. I want to close with two promises. First, I want to have, make a promise to the Lincoln firefighters and their families. As your fire chief, I promise to make your safety, your training, your equipment, and your overall well-being my top priority. Second is to the city and the community of Lincoln. I promise that as your fire chief, your firefighters will always be there for you in your time of need, and we'll make serving you our top priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for being here.
Actually, Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, just before Chief Alves leaves, I just want to give a, a huge thank you, Matt, for, you know, your time for stepping up. I know this wasn't something that you originally wanted, but you took on that responsibility and you really performed. We were in need of, of stability in that department. You gave it. I know that having a public safety chief is rare in, in government. Normally, what happens is you have a, basically a police chief and a fire chief, and they have someone over it. But here, we kind of broke that mold, and you carried it to get, you, you carried it, and you succeeded, and you delivered. So I want to thank you, thank you, thank you.
Those are my thoughts exactly. Thank you, Councilman Prolem. All right. So are you leaving us now, or we got to?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you. Oh, my gosh. Okay. All right, let's compose ourselves a little bit. Move on to item six, public comment. This is the time in the agenda where the public are welcome to make a comment on non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. All speakers, time will be limited to three minutes unless extended by the mayor. All comments or questions should be addressed to the mayor. And in most cases, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, but may engage in brief discussion, provide direction to city staff, or schedule items for future meetings. I do have one card, and that's for Mr. Stan Nader.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Stan Nader, and I live in the 12 Bridges area. Last Thursday, I sent an email to the city manager reminding him that he had said he would be sending me the capital improvement project list for the water department. As of this moment, I have not received that information. In his email promising that list, he stated some of the projects the city would be undertaking were replacing old water lines in downtown Lincoln and drilling more wells on the west side of the city. Unfortunately, old water lines don't, replacing old water lines don't increase the city's capacity to deliver surface water to the city. Wells are for managing peaking of the water system and are to serve as a backup to the surface water supply. Wells do go dry, which I can attest to because of my experience of being a farmer. I do appreciate what the water department did to make my lawn water sprinkler system work properly. My ongoing concern is that I do not want to be back before you the next irrigation season complaining that my lawn sprinkler system is not working again because the city is continuing to aggressively allow more housing in the city without making major improvements to the surface water delivery system. I did spend over $500 trying to make my system work, which probably I did not need to spend. I realize that you are not allowed to respond to my comments on this issue. So, I'm requesting that you place this item of increasing the city's capacity to deliver surface water to the city on the next city council agenda. Is my hope that this will allow for a substantial discussion on this matter and that the council can give direction to city staff to develop a realistic set of projects to address this important need for the residents of the city. I would like to remind you of the longstanding policy of previous city councils that new development need not impact current residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else in the room? Yes, Darla, please.
Hello, my name is Darla Geteris. For people that are, that don't know who I am, as you guys know, the board at least, maybe the people behind me don't. I live on the corner of Third and L, and we finally got our stop sign in the middle of the road. I love it, I love it, I love it. Okay? So, I just want to say thank you. Matt's not here, but if he can pass along. I also want to say thanks to my neighbor. I had to bring a 6'9" person in order to be recognized and helping me get this pushed through. It's been many years, starting with me going to the engineering department and getting the runaround, coming here at the beginning, getting the runaround, but we finally got it done. I have already seen changes on people stopping. The big rigs now stop a mile away instead of halfway through the stop sign. Cars are completely stopping. Hopefully, now that school will start on Thursday, it'll make even a better difference, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Darla. We appreciate your tenacity, and let us know how it goes once school starts. Okay. Alright, anybody else in the room which the make, oh, hi, sir, come on forward.
City Council looks like.
Yeah, you should come more often.
I can get a doctor's note.
Yes.
Anyway, for those that do not know me, I'm Dr. Lehman, Steve Lehman, please. Been practicing here in Lincoln for 24 years. My office is on F Street, but I live off of Joiner, or no, I'm sorry, on the west side of Joiner. Anyway, I have a letter here. I've had an ongoing issue with parking in front of my office, and I'd like the city council to please address it at some point. I've waited four years, so I think I've been patient. Anyway, so I put this together. I'm speaking to respectfully request that the Lincoln City Council consider designating the existing parking spaces directly in front of my office as reserved for patient use. I'm not seeking the creation of new parking spots only to ensure that the spaces already in place are available to those who need them most. As you may be aware, nearly 40% to 50% of Americans experience back pain at some point in their lives, often requiring professional care to manage and recover. For many of my patients, walking long distances from parking spaces to the office is not just inconvenient, but it can be physically challenging, painful, or even unsafe. While there is a designated disability parking on my premises, it is still too far for many of my patients, particularly those in acute pain or limited mobility. I've been waiting for four years for this problem to be addressed, and the number of patients I see clearly demonstrates an improvement to the situation is warranted. By designating the current spaces for patients, we can ensure that elderly individuals, those recovering from injury, and others experiencing acute discomfort have safe, close, and reliable access to care. This small change would make a significant difference in patient comfort and safety without impacting the city's overall parking availability. My goal is to continue serving Lincoln by providing effective, compassionate care. I believe this request is simple, reasonable, and I would like the city council to remove all the barriers needed for this to happen. I respectfully ask the council to consider this proposal and work with me to identify a feasible and fair solution that supports the health and well-being not only of our residents, but the voters as well. Thank you for your time, consideration, and commitment to our community. I look forward to the opportunity to discuss this matter further.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Real quick question. I know that we've spoken about this many times, I've spoken to staff about it, and we can, we'll circle back around to it. I know it's important to you. My question is, is it two spaces in front of your building or?
There are actually four, but I would request three.
Request, okay, that was my question, alright. And then, so if, I can't say if we are able to, but if we were able to do this for you, are you wanting them painted and just designated for business hours with a sign there that says, "Reserve for your office," or what? What is it that you actually need done to make sure that they're there for your patients?
I would prefer signs right in front of the parking spaces. I don't think paint alone would really stop anyone. I mean, maybe it would, I just don't know. But I know that the signs, if it's right there in front of them, they can visibly see it.
Yeah. I think that's something, yeah, I mean, I, we, you and I have talked about this multiple times, and I totally understand your need. I'm a little concerned about signs, and maybe Scott can speak to this, because if we put signs up for you, then we have to put signs up for every business. And I'm not sure that legally we can do that, but I don't, yeah, so, but, but I will commit to you that we will convene again, and we will, we will reach out to you, and we will do our best to find some kind of solution that we can do legally that will not, you know, because we can't do that for every business, but, but I understand that you have patients that need parking spaces, so.
In fact, I have two patients here.
Yes, thank you for coming.
That can verify.
Okay, and then I know I asked this to you before, and I forgot what you said. The spots that you own in the back of your business aren't well enough for your disabled patients? Don't you have spots of your own that come up?
I tell you what, I will, I will.
No, I'm just curious, just so we, I'm just curious.
Well, I've answered this question before, so.
I just said, I forgot what you said when I, yeah.
No, it's the handicap parking. It's the distance.
Okay. I just, I was just clarifying, it's the distance, okay.
Alright.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll be back, we'll be back in touch with you, and we'll do our best to work out a workable solution for you.
Will I be waiting another?
No, no. Yeah.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, any other public comments? And thank you for being here tonight. Anybody online? Nope, okay, closed public comment. And we will go to item seven of the consent agenda. I'm going to be pulling item 7B. I'm just going to reiterate my vote from last council meeting. So, we'll pull that, and then if there are any other items that council wants to pull or questions on, okay. Send, if there's no other comments or questions from the council or any questions from the public on any item, then I will entertain a motion to approve consent except for 7B, and then we'll do another vote on that.
Still moved.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Okay, and so, item 7B, this is the item that we discussed at length last council meeting, and so my thoughts and feelings have not changed, and I'm sure yours haven't either, but I wanted to just do a separate vote on this and not just get it lumped in with consent. So, anybody have any comments or questions, or are we good to vote on that? Okay, alright, we'll do a roll call on item 7B, please. Oh, yeah.
Moved.
Thank you. Only second.
One second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you. Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
No. Alright, thank you. Moving on to item eight, we have public hearings, we have two tonight. Item 8A, way first reading and introduced by title only in ordinance establishing a development agreement between the city of Lincoln and Stardust 80, a California-limited partnership in association with the Stardust Project, and further finding the ordinance is exempt from further environmental review under SEQA.
Hi, Mayor, I apologize that you had to read that entire thing before I asked this request.
Oh, sorry.
Would it be okay with you if we took 8B first? Our bond counsel has a flight.
Oh, yes. Well, yeah, where were you at agenda modification?
I was not.
That's my fault, that's completely my fault.
No, not a problem, we can do that. Alright, let's jump to, we'll pause that, we'll jump to 8B. And this one is a little bit more complicated. We are going to be doing a public hearing for formation of City of Lincoln Community Facilities District 2025-1 for the Joiner Ranch East. So, let me read my little notes here. So, we're going to be holding a public hearing relating to the formation of the City of Lincoln Community Facilities District number 2025-1, which is the Joiner Ranch East project. The public hearing related to the formation of the CFD is now open. Council has received a staff report on this matter, which is, has been entered into the record of this public hearing. And so, we're gonna, are we gonna hear our staff report first? Okay, so we'll hear our staff report on this, and then we will open up for questions and open the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I am going to just turn this over to our bond counsel, Brian Foreman.
Hey, Madam Mayor, council members, thank you so much for the accommodation to move this up. Really, really appreciate that, thank you. So, the actions you have before you this evening are continuation of the items that happened on June 24th when the council adopted the resolutions of intention to form the CFD for Joiner Ranch that called a public hearing for this evening. Just a quick reminder, Joiner Ranch is being developed by GenCalifornia. They're the master developer for the project, and they've entered into a contract with D.R. Horton to be the merchant builder to build all 198 units. The project is located basically at Joiner Parkway and Nicholas Road and consists of 26 acres. D.R. Horton has currently taken down 114 units. Some of those units are owned by what they would call their land bank. It's like a lending vehicle where there's a third-party lender that owns some of the lots, and then D.R. Horton takes it down from that land bank over and shifts as the homes are ready to be pulled, building permits on. So, the actions for you tonight are a couple of different actions. One is to have this public hearing. And then the resolutions before you would form the Community Facilities District and call an election, or two elections really. One is on the authorization of the special tax for the district. And then the other election would be on the incurrence of bonded indebtedness in amount not to exceed 23.5 million. The actual amount of bonds that'll be issued will be less than 23.5 million. The developer has about 14.2 million of city facilities that expects to finance from the CFD. And so, bonds will be somewhere 16, 17 million range probably when we come back to you. And I think the expectation is the developer is hoping to have bonds issued before the end of the year. So, I think, assuming formation tonight, that it's very likely that we'll be back to you sometime in November, December timeframe to approve the issuance of bonds for the project. The special taxes in the project range from $3,400 roughly annually for a house that's under 16, 125 square feet, up to just over $4,000 annually for a house that's over 2,000 square feet. And so, the other key point about this tonight is because there are no homeowners in the property, there's nobody that's registered to vote or lives in there currently. Underneath the Melrose Act, that means that it's a landowner election, where each owner of land has a vote for every acre that they own within the Community Facilities District. And so, the ballots were all mailed out to the landowners, and they have returned their ballots to the city clerk to hold the election tonight if you all decide to proceed for it, with it. And in order to evidence that, there's been communications, a certificate of the registrar of voters for Plastra County that's confirmed that there are no registered voters within the CFD. And then the other documents that, another one of the documents that's before you this evening is to approve the form of an acquisition and funding agreement. And that acquisition and funding agreement is a contract between the CFD, the city, and the developer that essentially says, if you build these facilities and you comply with certain city requirements for how you bid it and bid it and insure it and so forth, the city will agree to acquire those facilities with you from bond proceeds only if and when bond proceeds are issued. And so, that's an agreement, that's part of the approvals tonight. And with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that any of the council might have on the proceedings or the election tonight or on the CFD itself.
And I did just want to briefly add before we take your comments and questions that we've been continuing to have discussions and negotiations with the developer even as early as just a few hours ago. And as a result of those conversations, that they are removing or rescinding their request to include 10 years of PEGO within the acquisition and funding agreement in lieu of reimbursement agreement for infrastructure improvements in the Nicholas and Joiner intersections to be managed through another funding mechanism.
And just to put a point on what that really means is, so in connection with the issuance of bonds for CFD, that the CFD that you're forming, you'd form tonight, has a maximum tax rate. And that's the maximum taxes that can be levied each year on any property in the CFD. And in no instance can the city levy taxes above that maximum. When the city goes, the CFD goes to issue bonds, the bonds have to have what we call debt service coverage, a little bit of coverage. You have to have, the taxes have to be 10% higher than the debt service on the bonds. So, that creates that little bit of capacity that we call PEGO. And as Ms. Racker was mentioning, the developer originally requested that the city would agree to levy the maximum taxes for a period of 10 years to continue to reimburse them for ongoing infrastructure that wasn't previously reimbursed. Now that the developers remove that request, what that means is the city would just annually levy special taxes in the amount of debt service and the city's annual administrative expenses for administering the CFD going forward.
Alright, I think what we're going to do is we will open the public hearing and hear testimony from the public if anybody wishes to speak on it before we take comments or questions from the council. Okay, so, public hearing is open. Is there anybody in the room that would like to make testimony on this item? Anybody online? Oh, okay. Well, it's public hearing, we'll bring it back to the council. Discussions, questions from the council.
My only question is how to effectuate the change on PEGO. Which of the multiple resolutions and when do we need to have that inserted?
So, the acquisition agreement before you tonight is approved in substantially final form, and with the direction that we have this evening, we will include. we will include specifically in the acquisition agreement that the developer's not entitled to PEGO following the issuance of the bonds. That'll be included in the acquisition agreement that will be executed by the city manager.
Okay, so when we move to approve the acquisition agreement, that's when we do it with amendments?
Correct, we make a technical amendment based on the direction of council tonight.
All right, has the city clerk received written protest of any to the matters addressed here in this hearing from any registered voters or landowners of more than 50% of the acreage located within the CFD? And I think the answer is no, because there's nobody living there, right? They're not?
I have received zero written protest.
Great, thanks, just wanna make sure I asked the question and we get the right answer. Good, okay. So if there's no further comments from the public or members of the council, then I already closed the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution establishing the CFD, authorizing the levy of a special tax therein and calling an election with the CFD in the resolution determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in an amount not to exceed 23,500,000 within the CFD and calling an election within the CFD.
And Madam Mayor, this is at the time as part of that motion, if they want to make a specific motion for us to, for staff to revise the acquisition agreement to ensure that there's no PEGO, that would be part of this motion.
Do you need this separately, or is one gonna do it for all?
One is just fine.
Okay, so I'll move to adopt the item with the technical change to remove PEGO from the acquisition agreement.
Second.
Okay, so, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Okay, so the resolution that we just adopted, we'll call an election within the CFD, which is to be held this time by the city clerk.
Okay, thank you. All ballots have been cast in connection with this election for the CFD, and the election is now closed. The ballot propositions have been approved by more than two-thirds of the votes cast in the election for the CFD.
Okay, thank you. Having received confirmation from the city clerk of the relation, results of the election, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution, certifying the election resolutions within the CFD.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes, thank you. All right, so the resolution certifying the results of the election for the CFD has passed. And I would now ask for the clerk to conduct a first reading of the ordinance related to the CFD, which would authorize the levy of a special tax in accordance with the special tax formula approved by the landowners within the CFD at the election.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lincoln, California, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of City of Lincoln Community Facilities District number 2025-1, Joiner Ranch East, authorizing the levy of special taxes.
Okay, and so now it asks for a motion to introduce the ordinance for the CFD.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much, go catch your plane, appreciate it. All right, that was relatively painless. Very good, okay. Wonderful, okay. So now we can go back up to eight A, and I'm not gonna read it again, we'll just invite Michaela to come up and give us the presentation.
Fair enough, fair enough. Actually, no presentation for you all tonight, this should be relatively simple, hopefully. Knock on wood for that. Tonight, we have brought before you the Stardust Development Agreement. Just a little reminder on the Stardust Project, this was actually brought forward to you in July of 2024. There was a large lot and a small lot tentative map that you all approved back then. It's the development of 302 village low-density residential units, approximately two acres of parks and approximately two acres, excuse me, 20 acres of open space within the Village One plan area. The projects located south of McBean Park Drive and west of Stardust Lane. The Village One specific plan requires that all projects enter into a development agreement with the city, so that's exactly why I'm here tonight. Since July of last year, city staff and the applicant team have been negotiating language that satisfies both parties within the agreement. Similar language has been adopted in other DAs that we've recently processed, such as the Heartland at Hidden Hills and Level Ranch Project DA. So we're essentially taking majority of the same language that was in those documents and placed it in this one. Just a reminder that the DA outlines the obligation of the developer for this specific project. So tonight, I, staff recommends that council determine that no further environmental analysis is required because the addendum that was previously adopted as part of the tentative map approvals back in July of 2024 was intended to be used in connection with this development agreement. And to consider waiving first reading and adopting by title only an ordinance establishing a development agreement between the City of Lincoln and Stardust 80. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Nope, okay. Open the public hearing, is there any testimony on this from the public? Anybody online? Nope, okay. We'll close that and bring it back to the council. Any other questions or comments? If not, oh, to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll move.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Thank you, Michaela, appreciate that. All right, on to general business, nine A. Consideration of an employment agreement amendment for the city manager and city attorney, including compensation and benefits adjustment. Hello, Veronica.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. On April 1st, 2025, the city retained the services of municipal resource group to facilitate the performance evaluation process for both the city manager and city attorney. Based on the performance evaluations for Mr. Scully and Ms. Mollinkoff, it is recommended that council consider the following actions. The first action being to grant the city manager a 5% merit increase, setting the new annual base salary at $281,190. The second being to grant the city attorney a 5% merit increase, setting the new annual base salary at $256,620. In addition to these merit increases, it is recommended that council also consider adding an annual $10,000 city contribution to the 457 deferred compensation accounts of both the city manager and the city attorney. If these recommended employment agreement amendments are approved, it is necessary to adopt a new revised salary schedule for the city manager as a proposed base wage increase will exceed the current band. The estimated cost of these proposed changes for fiscal year 2526 is $44,480, which does necessitate a budget augmentation as outlined in the staff report. And this concludes my presentation, I can now answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just an observation, when I started off my first career at the City of Rochester, New York, it was about 150,000 people. I think the city manager, I think, was earning $30,000 a year. But, you know, I don't think that people truly understand the complexity of local government, especially a city of our size, and the work that they've done. Now, I've only been on the council for a couple of months, but I've known both of these individuals for years now. And as far as I'm concerned, the work that they do is exemplary. My understanding is also that the new pay scales are gonna be still below the median for our sector. And so I am fully supportive of this.
Yeah, and just as for the public's knowledge, we did a very thorough evaluation. We had consultants help us go through the process of looking at Ms. Mollinkoff's and Mr. Scully's performances last year. And then we, we had two, two of us work on compensation. And so, or no, I think we all just did it together, right? Yeah, in our closed session, yeah. So, it was a great process and something that we will utilize moving forward. And I'm very comfortable with the package and very grateful for the work that Sean and Christine do here. All right. I'll open it for public comment. Anybody wish to make a comment? Anybody online? All right, bring it back to the council. And if you guys are all good, let's make a motion and finish this thing.
I'll move to.
One second.
Okay. Councilmember Reedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund.
Yes.
Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Right, thank you, Veronica, really appreciate all your work on that. And we get to keep you for a while longer, yes, very excited about that, yes. I think we have a great team and we want to make sure everybody feels valued and keep the good work going. Okay, item 10, city manager reports.
Yes, thank you. Just wanna point out, there's two, I didn't get to make any comments and I'm happy with that because when a chief's appointment, any chief, fire or police, happens, kind of a, it's a really big deal. And this one in particular was a really big deal for two reasons. One is it's been a long time since we've had a standalone fire chief. And secondly, for Chief Mahia, getting to, as Keith Alves can tell you, getting to that chief's position is a windy road that you're not really ever sure you're gonna, you don't start off your career typically in public safety and think, I'll be the chief one day, it's not a thing typically. And if you do, you're probably gonna have a pretty rough road to get there, I would think. But I wanna just add one little tidbit. The thing Matt didn't tell you was that when we sat down and he was kind of pitching this idea and we were talking through why it makes sense, or, and I had, you know, my job sometimes is to sort of poke holes and he, you know, responds in kind. I said to him, you know what you're really doing is you're, you're reducing a direct report to you and you're adding one to my. So I only had one chief to deal with and now I have two? Yeah. But, you know, all joking aside, we're really excited. And one other little funny tidbit, we've been working on Chief Mahia's deal leading up to today. And I will just say that, and I'm glad you got back here right when I said this, chief, is that it, I will tell you that for anybody that's gonna be a city manager themselves one day, it is a little bit complex to negotiate employment with a chief, deputy chief that just helped stop three fires in Lincoln in the last two weeks. Makes it a little more difficult than if he had just been, you know, doing the normal cats out of trees and the other things that fire departments do. You know, so, so we're super excited, I'm really super excited to have him. I just wanted to make sure it didn't, the meeting didn't pass without you being really clear that, you know, we knew he was the guy way before we even thought about the actual position, so. Congratulations, chief. Secondly, just wanted to say that it has been six years roughly since the City of Lincoln administered and adopted its own CFD internally, which is what Nita just did a couple of items ago. And the reason why that's super important is that it is kind of a maturity thing for the City of Lincoln. Like, we've gotten to a level where technically, we can actually administer one of these in-house. Folks in the public may not know, but almost all of the rest of our CFDs are formed and administered by a third party, which has some upsides and it has some downsides. And one of the downsides is that there's less control for folks' elected bodies. And that's one of the things we sought to solve through this process, so. Excited about that, we're hoping, Clifton and John and the folks at Taylor were our guinea pig on this process, so I'm sure they'll be giving you feedback about how it went after it's all done. Only two other little, three other little quick announcements. First off, tomorrow, we're gonna do one last pass at economic development of the RFP and RFI for the 84 acres at the airport, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page at that body, this body's already approved it. We are still playing with dates and trying to figure out what kind of timeframe we want to give so that there's a most robust response. We're already getting lots of phone calls, I just got a couple emails today. And we haven't even done any marketing yet, so there's already a lot of groups that are interested. GSEC's been a bit involved on this one too, I think they're interested to see what we get. So we'll have some reports back probably on a kind of reoccurring basis. And then, one other little thing, because I don't think, Mayor, that we've talked about it a whole lot, I'm just making sure I have the date correct here. But we, many, many, many years ago, the City of Lincoln used to put on a charity golf tournament, which was designed to basically generate money for underserved kids and families that couldn't afford to be part of some of our recreation programs, to basically provide scholarships so they don't have to pay as much or anything at all. And it's been a really good program. We still have a relatively sizable balance in that account to help families and kids participate. Anyway, it sort of stopped, I think, during COVID, right? And for a variety of reasons, it didn't restart. And then Mayor Andriata mentioned, maybe late last year, hey, we really need to get this going again. And Doug and the team over at REC have restarted it, they're already getting sponsors, et cetera. So, that's coming up, if you're interested in playing, please take a look at our website or call REC.
Friday, September 26.
Friday, September 26, it's a lot of fun, it goes to a really good cause. You can buy a team or an individual, there's food and drinks and fun raffles and things like that. So, you know, there's plenty of golf tournaments you could play on virtually any weekend here in the area, but this is one that actually goes to help your community. So we're just doing a little advertisement selfishly here, and that's all I got tonight, thank you.
All right, item 11, council initiated business. Then we have business to initiate. I just wanted to say thank you to the council and staff for the support for the Freedom Through Education proposition. We'll see how it goes, but thank you for believing in that, that it could be something really good and being willing to vet it out. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you for making that connection.
Yeah.
With like a light bulb went on my head as I'm listening to him talk, because I had just met with these people and I was like, oh my gosh, that could be great. All right, no other business? Okay, committee reports.
I have none, but air pollution control just later this week, Pioneer Energy is dark. It'll resume in, in September.
Okay, yeah. I've been dark too, except for I did fill in for you at the RAB.
Yes.
And I was trying to take notes. It was a great meeting, so just a couple highlights. That, you know, the group is working on their feasibility study with all of the stakeholders involved. The leaders there said they're, they're continuing with their sampling. They should have in October, soil and groundwater samples. They're going, one of the presenters did a whole big thing on how they inject the groundwater with certain types of iron that destroys the TCE. That was very interesting. And then, they, and we saw this email too about the vapor barriers. There's residents there that were concerned that in Hidden Hills and other houses that are being built, that they were actually doing the vapor barriers, well, we've seen proof of that, they are doing them. And there was a question from a resident that wanted to make sure that real estate agents are disclosing to the people who buy the houses. And, yeah, and I think I said, well, by law they have to. And there was a comment about, well, there's like three pages of disclosures and they, they don't, they're, they leave it off or whatever. And so, I just said, well, we'll verify, I'm pretty sure that real estate agents have to disclose, like, otherwise they would lose their license to sell houses. And then, for the Hidden Hills, there are, there is, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong here, there were PG&E trench issues, there were delays, but are they moving forward now? Are they, like, I know there's been several delays with PG&E with different parts of the project.
Yeah, so, I mean, let's just be super upfront about it, because we'd like it to be going a lot faster than it is. And it's difficult, you know, I feel like one of those people where I keep saying, oh, just next week and just one more week. And the reality, Vin and I spoke the other day, is you, we will not see a completion to that intersection until at least the first quarter of next year.
Yeah.
PG&E delayed, I'll just say it publicly, PG&E delayed the project by nine months. There's zero we can do about it.
Yeah.
So it's very frustrating.
Well, and I've heard in the region, there's other projects that are not necessarily ours that PG&E has delayed as well.
Every single one I'm aware of.
Yes, so.
Dutch Bros project.
Yeah, Dutch Bros too, yes, yeah. And then lastly, on a side note but related, the representative from the county talked about the range cleanup that the county has approved, the $3.7 million from the Board of Supervisors. They've, they'll have their contractor selected next month. And he said, once that happens, the cleanup should be done in a couple months. So we should see that finished pretty quickly.
By the end of the year.
But, yeah, pretty quickly, so. Yeah, so that was, it was fun feeling. But, yeah, pretty quickly. So, yeah, so that was, it was fun filling in. Oh, and, and they are looking for new members for the RAB. And they handed me a stack of applications and I did it bring them with me. But if anybody in the public wants to sit on this board, they need more people.
They were very appreciative of being allowed, being allowed to use McBean.
Yeah, it was great.
And they want to do it again in October.
Yep.
So that was really good. They were very appreciative. Also, they've done a very, very good job on their newsletter, which is now public. And I think we're, we're pinging it through our systems, yeah.
John, do you have any committee reports?
You and I had Lisswa.
Yeah.
Nothing yet, just report there. Economic Development Board with the county had a made up, make up meeting last week. There was interesting GSEC, kind of summary about technology projects that have been going on in the area, mostly in Smod and Roseville areas. But I'll forward that to everyone for, it was interesting, side deck.
All right, information items. I know there's one that was very exciting for all of us. We did the airport hangar groundbreaking last week. And that was a lot of fun and it was very exciting and had a great turnout. And Richard gave some really great comments. And I was able to share a few comments. And then Ed got up and shared. And we got to move some dirt. And Jessup will be doing an article on that for their magazine. That'll come out in a few months. So that's, so we are, we are moving.
And if you haven't been out there in the last couple of days, it's even more impressive what they're doing. They're making hills where there were flatlands before, so, yeah.
It's going to be a great, great economic driver for the city and the airport.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anybody else have any information items?
Well, just on.
Wings and wheels.
Wings and wheels, of course.
Yes.
I can't believe it's only two weeks away, or less than that, right, right now. So Friday, August twenty-second and Saturday, August twenty-third, we're going to have sixty aircraft out there, specialty aircraft, about two hundred cars, hot air balloons, a great event on Friday night with the hot, with the hot air moon glow. And Saturday, we'll be having lifting off by five, hot air balloons first thing in the morning. And then all planes will be coming in. We're getting a great lineup. Special thank you for, you know, to Scott and the Public Works team and police and fire, the Chamber of Commerce. We're all pulling together. We just got a great team to make it a great event for the, for the community. We want to make this a very family-friendly Friday night. So the entrance fee is five dollars. There's no parking. You come back on Saturday. The entrance fee for adults is ten dollars. Everyone under eighteen is free. And again, no parking. We'll have lots of food trucks out there, over sixty vendors. It's going to be a madhouse. We're expecting ten thousand plus people.
Unfortunately, I have a work trip that weekend, so can you judge planes for the chamber? Okay, thank you. I told Tom I would ask you to fill in for me. And yes, yeah, so, okay. Yeah, yes. Unfortunately, I have to travel down south for a trip for Jessup with the Jessup donors. So I'll miss it and I'm sorry to miss it, but I got to have a job that pays the bills sometimes, so. Anything else?
Yeah, speaking of chamber, we, I think we all got an email and I just remembered that Leadership Lincoln applications are being extended to this Friday. And that's on the Chamber website, lincolnchamber.com, Leadership Lincoln. I'm a graduate along with.
We graduated the same class.
Mayor Hall and I were the same class. And it's an amazing program to learn all about how our city operates. And it was well worth it. And maybe we can all pump that out in our socials and, yeah.
All right, anything else? Okay, thank you, staff. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.
Yay.